UBSutter.live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Councilmember Velzah?
Here.
Councilmember Gilchrist?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bette Cavoli?
Here.
And Mayor Branscombe?
Yes ma'am, please stand and join in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which this stands, one nation, united, equal, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you change this to the agenda?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Item number two will be removed from tonight's agenda.
Item number two. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report on the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, there is nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Pease, we are going to experience a general plan update. Looking forward to it. And this is further to updates you've given, one and two at a time, to the Marysville City Council members. So it's not all new to us.
Testing, hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, I'm Kathy Pease, a planning consultant for the city of Marysville. I'm pleased to be here this evening for another general plan update. Instrumental to this update, our help also from Community Development Department Dan Flores and the Public Works Department Vincenzo. So I want to thank them for the assistance that they provide as well. Next slide. No problem. So I will be going over the purpose of the workshop. And this will allow for a discussion and to go over next steps. So we'll talk about the general plan update, proposed changes to the municipal code, Chapter 18. And have a discussion and then talk about next steps. Next slide. As you are aware, this is part of a larger effort that includes the general plan update, the drafting of a downtown specific plan, and the zoning code update. This first step is to provide information to the council and the public on where we are to date before we schedule formal hearings. So AECom, the consultant preparing the general plan update and specific plan, is starting to produce administrative draft chapters of the general plan. Three chapters have been completed, which include the vision, guiding principles, and land use. Next slide. The land use chapter is important because it establishes the types of land uses that we want to see in the city going forward. Its main goals are to support economic development and infill housing. It will also look at possible expansion of the city limits. Next slide. This graphic shows the current land use diagram for the city. Interestingly enough, I recently learned that the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, actually pulled the city's sphere of influence away from the north during the county's general plan update in 2012. So you see a pink, two pink areas north of the city. Those are no longer within the city's sphere of influence. Next slide. It's hard to see this far away, but there is a green area that's showing a large area south of the city, and this is our existing sphere of influence. So this is an area that the city has potential interest in growing into the future. So a sphere of influence in a general plan identifies areas of interest. So city would have a say and be able to comment on projects within that area. Next slide. This is the proposed?
Me Kathy?
Yeah.
Now, could you go back to the prior slide? I just wanted to make clear, it, obviously, it shows the existing city limits.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
If you would define the area that is outside the existing city limits, if you could just describe that orally?
Sure. I see that the existing city limits are dark green, and it's really hard to see. There's a slightly more lighter green, and where the arrow is being shown right now is where the sphere of influence. So it's the large area that jogs sort of to the east on the map. On the south side of the city is where the sphere of influence is right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, yeah.
To the Chair question?
Yes, sir.
Um, so our county district is not necessarily all under our sphere? Because part of our district is west, Linda.
Oh, for fire services and things like that? Yeah, that's true. It does not follow the sphere of influence line.
But this is just the existing, and we're talking, she'll be talking about the broadening of that.
Yeah, so a fire district would be part of the municipal services district, so there'd be different districts within that. So yes, as part of this, we want to also examine potential changes to that sphere. And so going forward, we'll be checking back in with council on some updated maps to show potentially near-term annexation proposals, maybe farther out, and then long-term. So we have some ideas, and we'll be back to get some input.
Thank you.
So again, this is the proposed general plan. It looks different from the original general plan or the one that we have right now. We are proposing to have larger areas of general land use. The orange here will show neighborhoods residential.
What is general land use? When you use these terms, please give a little more characterization.
So the general plan brings forward land use. So depending on the type of land use color on the map, gives an indication for existing residents and businesses and potential developers that come to the city to see what types of land use are allowed. So in the orange, that's an existing residential, primarily residential neighborhood. So we want to maintain that. We want to make sure that we have policies to support the orange residential areas. The red areas on this map are what we would say are potential for commercial or employment, office, those types of uses. And then there's a large gray area, and that's what we're proposing to have a downtown specific plan. And that specific plan is the next level after the general plan. It'll allow us to more specifically look at parcel data and look at roadway improvements and things that can happen more near-term for investment. So again, the general plan is a high-level policy document that we're looking to craft a vision for the city out to 2050. And then the specific plan in the downtown area will help us to kind of dive a little bit deeper. Next slide. So again, for those land use categories, we're proposing neighborhood, which is single-family residential primarily. Urban neighborhood, which also allows a single-family house, but it could also allow townhomes or condominiums or apartments. Employment would be commercial, office, things of that nature. There was green on the map, and that's going to be open space, public lands, parks and recreation opportunities. And then again, the gray that was on the map is the downtown specific plan. So in support of the downtown specific plan, AECom prepared an economic development report. And they also are proposing specific land uses within the downtown. So there's going to be an emphasis on supporting economic development, increased workforce housing. So these districts would allow mixed use for commercial, support uses in the medical arts district, which is supporting the hospital area. Downtown mixed use, mixed use neighborhoods, as well as the B Street corridor. So AECom did an economic profile of the city. The report focused on economic development opportunities, market trends, emerging industry clusters, and demographic changes related to land use and planning. They found that even through the pandemic, the job space in downtown has been resilient. They've seen employment growth in public administration and management, healthcare, food service, and retail. Looking forward, they felt that there were opportunities to maintain and enhance the historic neighborhoods, walkability, sense of place in the downtown, and promote job growth in restaurants, entertainment, retail, hospitality, and the arts. In addition to future demand for office to support growth in healthcare, social services, professional and business services, and government, there also are housing opportunities focused on amenities, walkability, job concentration in the specific plan area that would bring additional discretionary income to Marysville. So it's a positive report. They did find low vacancy rates and an upward rent trend with premiums being asked for rents. So they suggest increased market demand for residential development will be seen in the future. So since the last general plan update, we've provided to the city council, we've increased public outreach efforts. We've been busy. Citywide paper mailer went out in December. We now have a dedicated general plan webpage link that can be found on the community development webpage. There have been two more surveys in both paper and electronic versions. AECom is currently conducting interviews with major employers to get feedback. And we held a public scoping meeting with the planning commission to solicit information on what should be analyzed in the environmental impact report. As information becomes available, we'll continue to update the council and post things to our website.
Pardon me Kathy, so the public outreach is, so public, the public has a chance to provide input and comment and what have you?
Yeah.
And you say it was a citywide?
Mailer that went out with the utility bills, yes, in December.
Every resident?
Yes.
What kind of feedback, what kind of response are you getting on that?
It's great. We do have a link, and we can provide the council with paper copies as well, a link on the website.
I'm just talking about numbers, what?
Um, I think we got 80 responses to the paper.
What about with the, to the utility bills?
That's, that's with the utility bills.
Eighty.
Eighty.
Eighty out of how many thousand?
Twelve thousand plus.
Well, there you go. No, I asked the question because at a CECOG meeting last week, some very strong recommendations came out for a survey sent out to 100,000 people. Only 1% responded, and somehow that 1% was presented as representing the will of the people. So they did, you do your best to get these things out there so people can comment, and if they don't, they lost their chance.
And I think an important component of it is just so that folks know, have a chance to know what we're doing. So we're letting as many people as we can know about the process.
Thank you.
Yes. Next slide. So we also are doing a zoning code update. As part of the housing element that we did in 2021, the state identified a need to update the zoning code consistent with recent state law. We also are updating information. Some of it's out of date because it's been a while since it's been updated. We're substantially expanding zoning definitions to help folks know what some of the terms are. As I mentioned, we're having new districts to support the downtown specific plan that's also in process. And if you remember, both the specific plan and the zoning code update are being funded by a grant. Next slide. So we have drafted changes to the zoning code. And again, we have updated the definitions. We've updated the zoning districts for the downtown. We've streamlined commercial district development. We've made changes to accessory dwelling units, the density bonuses for affordable housing, and then Senate Bill 9, which allows urban lot splits. So those are the proposed changes to the chapters. So in addition, we are also looking for ways to support housing investment and eliminate constraints to developing new housing. So we're looking at residential parking standards. We are hearing from developers concern that parking standards make development infeasible, especially on existing buildings that may cover an entire parcel. Currently, the code requires 1.5 spaces per residential unit to be placed on site. So there are, obviously, if we have a historic building or a building that takes up an entire parcel, and a developer wants to come in and convert it to units, there isn't any available room on that site. So we are looking at ways, possible ways to help facilitate development. Next slide. So some of the things we might consider include reducing the standard from 1.5 to one space per unit. Exempt projects, nine units or fewer. For projects that are 10 units or greater that can't meet the parking requirement, it would require pre-application analysis before the planning commission to determine if adequate parking is available either onsite or on street, and parking permits may be required. So we're going to the planning commission next week with these proposals in another parking workshop to get feedback before we bring this forward. So next steps. We had a planning commission public workshop on the zoning code and parking in May. We're having the update here tonight, and like I mentioned, next week, we're going back to the planning commission to talk about parking. All of these proposals, the general plan, the zoning code amendment, and the specific plan, we're continuing to work on, and we'll continue to bring you updates as more information becomes available. Right now, we're hoping in the fall to winter 2024, going to the planning commissions for public, formal public hearings, and then the entire project coming forward to the council in the spring or summer of 2024. That concludes my update. Would you answer any questions?
To the Chair. Kathy, can we go back to the land use slide? Wanted to ask several questions on that. Um, I noticed you've got, obviously, the downtown specific plan in the gray.
Yes.
You're talking about?
The entire project coming forward to the council in the spring or summer of 2024. So that concludes my update. Would you answer any questions?
To the Chair. Kathy, can we go back to the land use slide? Wanted to ask several questions on that. Um, I noticed you've got, obviously, the downtown specific plan in the gray.
Yes.
You're talking about the neighborhood and the urban neighborhood. If I heard you correctly, there's some differences there between single-family and high-density, you know, multifamily, right? And then you've got the one employment area, which is basically right there at 14th, basically where the Appeal Democrat is and our corporate yard, et cetera. What do you propose doing with a lot of the, like, the highway commercial frontage, the commercial shopping center? I'm thinking like the Save Mart Shopping Center, the old Cannery Building, there's a commercial district in East Marysville that's obviously a grocery store. You know, what, what happens to them in the new general plan, right? Because right now, they've got uses that fit underneath the current zoning definitions, commercial, general commercial, C1, C2, et cetera. So then do they, are they granted special use permits, or how does that all fit together?
That's a good question, and I'm going to write that down and take it back to our consultant because the intent is absolutely to provide services to the residential neighborhoods. So we don't want to grandfather those in or preclude them from going forward. You know, we want to make sure that that's a use that's supported.
Right.
So I will go back and make sure that we take a good look at that and make sure that we aren't having unintended consequences.
One of the things I'm thinking about in particular is that, and you know, there's a, there was a vacant, the old Long's Drugs Building, which now is going to have a new user going into it and thinking like, okay, this is potentially a residential, high-density residential, yet this is definitely a commercial use that's coming in. What do we, how do we navigate that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So there could be some future changes as we have more presentations and taking those into account.
Absolutely, and that's the purpose of bringing this to you early. This is what I call an administrative draft. It's still very much in draft form. We want feedback. We want to make sure it makes sense. We have the ability to make those changes before we go into the, you know, fall and, and have a public hearing. We want to make sure that we look at these, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Quick question, and perhaps you covered this Kathy. And you referred to it as orange. It looks like it's dirty yellow up there.
Yeah.
The orange slash dirty yellow is neighborhood, and then the red, I guess, urban neighborhood. What's the difference between neighborhood and urban neighborhood?
So neighborhood, I would say, is to support single-family residential. The urban neighborhood would support single-family residential as well, if those are uses that are in there, but it also?
As well as what?
As well as apartments or townhomes. So the urban neighborhood would support higher densities.
Oh, so neighborhood is single-family?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Well, I see, just a moment. If you look at 18th Street, East 18th Street, there is a, there are, let's see. 12th, 14th, 18th, oh, I see it is covered. No, I see. Trying to get my bearings here. On East 18th, there are two multi-unit developments just to the east of Marysville High School. Are those in the, it's kind of a terracotta color there? Yes, they are. But then there are multifamily off of? But then there are multifamily off of Highway 20 at East 22nd, and I don't see that as a separate color. And is multifamily supposed to be urban?
So I asked that question to AE Comm. because I was concerned that the land use table shows that units up to 36 dwelling units per acre are allowed in that area, and again, I, my intent was primarily in the neighborhood to have a single-family residential, but he indicated that there are existing apartment complexes within the neighborhoods, and we didn't want to preclude that. So that is why, so they are allowed, they're able to go forward, but we don't see that type of development really going forward in the neighborhoods because there aren't a lot of parcels where high-density would be accommodated.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that makes sense.
Well, I'll admit I didn't follow all of it, but that's good enough for now, thank Sir?
I'm just curious on, we have the urban neighborhood in the downtown specific land piece, which is down at First Street, and I believe that's, I think it's kind of a burned-down area right now, isn't it, Chief? Down there where the body shop and that was. So what would be the idea of having urban development there? So the capability of putting multi-units within that area?
Yes.
Interject, I apologize. So in summary, this map's a work in progress.
It is. Yeah, absolutely. Open to feedback.
Whip it.
If I could interject too, I think, as you mentioned, Councilman Belza, it's a work in progress, and we'd encourage you to, like, take it home, study, look at it carefully, and any feedback you have, send it to either Kathy or myself through community development, and we can make sure that we incorporate your concerns or feedback or answer any questions that you have. Same applies to the public as well, so we encourage everyone to look over the plan as it is a work in progress, and it's never complete until it's complete, right?
Okay, were you, zoning code proposed changes, where were we?
Where are we with the zoning code changes?
Where are we?
Oh, we're at the, we're at the end of the presentation, so we're at questions.
Please, to the chair, one more question. So where you've got designated open spaces and public lands, obviously, they're open spaces and public lands, I get that, but to be able to develop those, do we have to go back in there and then do some kind of an overlay in there, or is it by?
So one of the things when we did the advisory committee, there was a lot of comments about activating the space for uses and not turning the back. So there is a vision for supportive services in some of those areas. So that's where, when we have the recreation element, we'll bring forward policies and identify the types of unit uses that you would like to see.
Uses we'd like to see changed?
Yes, possibly, or continue, so there are opportunities within the green area.
Okay, so that will come back before we get too far along. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? And I think the message to the public is that this is an open topic, and maybe you could go back through means for contacting you and others involved intimately in the process for input.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's supporting documents that have been posted today for the agenda that include the land use element, the land use figure, the economic development study I mentioned. So there's a couple of things that are posted to tonight's agenda, so the public can go online and find those documents. Again, on, if you go to the city's website, you go to the Community Development Department, at the top of the Community Development Department's webpage is a link for the general plan. You can click on that, and our contact information is there, and additional information. I, if anyone in the audience would like, I've got business cards I can give them tonight if they want to give me a call or email me.
Now, if you could quickly outline the timetable for completion of this, of this whole process.
Yes, so...
And the steps.
Yes, so a lot of work still needs to be done. We still need, I think, oh, five more chapters of the general plan to be drafted. Those include the recreation element, the noise element, transportation will be big, they'll, AE Comm. will be doing an existing traffic study, and then as part of this, we have to do environmental review, so we're going to do an entire environmental impact report that will look at future build-out of the city and look at the impacts. So once the EIR is completed, it will need to circulate for public review for 45 days. During that review period is the time we'll start take, having public hearings at the planning commission, and then any comments we got on the EIR will respond to those, and then the final EIR will be brought forward with responses to any comments to the city council, and then we'll start the public hearing process at that time. So I anticipate that the rest of the chapters for the general plan will be completed this summer, and we'll start bringing drafts to you in the fall, and hopefully, fall to early winter, start bringing the entire documents, draft documents to the planning commission.
And before it reaches the council, it goes to the planning commission and what have you?
Correct, and they'll make recommendations on each item, on the general plan, the specific plan, the zoning code chapters, and the environmental impact report.
And you made reference to the noise plan we have, we will have a discussion later in the agenda about a noise ordinance that is desperately needed. Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Just one last question. You're mentioning the EIR. Is the EIR only applicable to the general plan, or will it be applicable to the adjusted sphere of influence?
So the, the EIR will cover the general plan. At a high level, it will cover potential for annexation or changes to the sphere of influence. So we, I anticipate that we'll have several alternatives that could look at different scenarios for annexation or sphere changes, and so that'll be part of the alternatives analysis in the EIR.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. We will now move to the Community and Consent Calendar Forum. And I have a paragraph I'm obliged to read here. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or, on matters not already on the agenda, are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes. If you'd like to comment and you're attending the meeting in person, please complete a speaker's card, and you can get that and return it to the city clerk, and when called upon, go to the podium to address the council. If you're participating via Zoom, raise your hand, and you'll be gotten to and have it, and be given an opportunity to speak. Whether you're here in person or attending via Zoom, when called upon, please give your name clearly for audio recording. You're requested to address your comments to the council and not to the audience, and by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, just fairness. If you have any documentation you'd like to be distributed to the council, please mail it to City Clerk, 526 C Street, Marysville 95901. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We do, thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker will be Andrea.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Andrea. I work as a labor and delivery nurse at the Wright Out Hospital since 18 years. I've been a nurse since 30 years. I'm speaking for the whole entire team, even if it's just today myself. I would request the city to make a space, create a space for grieving parents, is, for grieving parents, for parents who are in the process of grief, so especially for parents who experienced miscarriage or fetal demise or stillbirth. So it's, it's a complete taboo subject. I moved from Europe here, it's a taboo subject in the whole entire world, not only here, and there are very few places in the public where those parents can actually relate to and have a legitimate space as grief. So rule-wise, pregnancies that are over 20 weeks, they get an offer to bury their children, or there is a facility in town that offers that for free, but under 20 weeks, those fetuses become hospital waste, and so those parents never get to actually experience any designated place or designated anything to grieve for those, for those babies. It's not only an issue for the women, sometimes the women go home and they don't have necessarily understanding family members that can relate to this subject, so I think it will be just as much, you know, a place for, for men as well, or cousins, or whoever family member wants to relate to those women. So it can be done in the form of maybe a commemorative bench that we can put maybe in a park, or maybe an artistic sculpture that we can work together with the Arts Council to put somewhere in a location in the city, or in the local cemetery, or somewhere where people can go and, and attend to. Grief happens in stages over years, sometimes you don't think about it for a long time, and then you think about it back after years, and you need a place to go to. So I can go into details later on, I think I'm over my time. So from the city representation, if it's fetal demise over 20 weeks, we, we call the corner, so that's normally the interaction that people have with the city through the corner, but then when they leave the hospital, there's no, there, there are some local private grieving supports, but there's no, like, official public space where those people can go. This year, we started one of the best fetal demise support programs at our hospital. We're very proud, proud is probably not the appropriate word, but we're very grateful and humbled to have this great program that really supports families to, to, you know, say goodbye to their loved ones in a, in a very gentle and caring and dignifying way, and I can go more in detail about this after this meeting, but, but as I said, as much as we are trying to really make it a loving process as much as it's possible within the hospital, we have nowhere to tell those people, if you don't have a grave, or if you don't have the ashes of your baby, this is a place that you can go to further down the line and just, I don't know, sit down for a moment and think about your grief, or bring some flowers or whatever. So I think that, that we can contribute to a lot of good with maybe not a large money investment in the community and just kind of make a change, make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I regard any nurse as an angel. Well, and I am more intimately familiar, pardon me, with the grief of losing a child than most.
I'm really sorry.
I lost a child earlier this year, and to lose one at such an early age or stillborn and what have you, it's still an awful experience, I'm sure. I don't know exactly what the city might be able to do, but I'm glad you came to us, and I presume you're seeking other avenues for support for this.
Yes, of course, I mean, we have a foundation at the hospital that can maybe contribute financially to create something, we just need the official allowance to have a space, if we would have like a commemorative bench, or a, you know, or an art object or something, or a mural, whatever it is, to just be allowed to have that space in the city and not just assume that we can expose that.
Do you want to comment?
I, I know we're not supposed to engage in conversation on public comment, but I'd be interested in having further dialogue with you about this, maybe after the meeting or if you have her contact information. Perfect, and I can...
We're just looking for more information.
I've got some ideas that, that might be helpful.
Thank you so much, I really, really appreciate it. It's a big breakthrough moment.
If council member doesn't mind, I'd like to be involved in that conversation because I think there might be some opportunities there.
Yes, thank you so much, and just so you know, as I said, this is a taboo subject in the whole entire world, there are very few cities that are actually publicly addressing this. I think, I have faith in us that we are, that evolved to actually make a stand and make a change, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker will be Julie Coulson.
Welcome.
Hi. Hi, I'm Julie Coulson, and I just don't know where to go, so I decided to come to the city council meeting. Ellis Lake has four garbage cans on D Street. There is no garbage cans around the lake at all. When I talk to the public works, they say it's because the homeless people throw them into the lake, but my, my thing is, how do I go about getting more garbage cans that you guys can, like, either chain down or do something?
I'm curious where you live.
I live down, I live in East Marysville, but I grew up on 12th Street.
I live right on the lake, and I know what you're talking about.
You do, I see you cleaning your, I see it, because I walk my dog, and, and this, and so I would just like, I think there would be maybe a little less garbage if there was garbage cans on 14th Street and B Street, and I know Little Caesar's gets a lot of garbage because that's the only other garbage can. So I don't know, where, what are my next stops? I mean...
You're not, you're not the only one that's noticed the problem, and, and our most excellent Public Works Director who's here, and in turn, as a means of just getting more information out, not engage, we're not engaging on this because we're not supposed to. Mr. Public Works Director, do you have any insight on that? Or you could bring it up, you could come back later at another meeting.
Yeah, we can research that, that issue.
So you've inspired research and a closer look.
All right.
How's that? He's a good guy, he wouldn't say that if he wasn't going to do it.
All right, because we could have the, the old rock ones that they used to have, that you just stick the garbage can in, but, all right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Madam Clerk.
Our final, final speaker, possibly speakers, will be led by John Kenyon.
Good evening. So I'm John Kenyon, this is Laura Rosalini, this is Carla Rosalini Peverini.
I love the names.
Yes, deeply Italian. So we're actually here to actually go a little bit more in depth of, in the topic of Ellis Lake. That was something that's one of our concerns as well, and we actually are wanting to seek information on how to begin and adopt a park program, to possibly put something together that's volunteer-based.
I may interrupt, we haven't adopted a park program.
Yes, like how we can get involved with it, how we can help organize people, how we can get materials available. A lot of the times, we actually live pretty close to the lake ourselves, and I've grown up here my whole life, they've grown up here their whole lives, and walking the lake, as many of you probably know, there's several obstacles you must overcome to walk the lake. The trash, yes, that accumulates around the perimeter of the lake, but also the trash that accumulates around the perimeter of the inside of the lake that needs to be netted out, right? That sometimes gets missed through nobody's fault, you know, even if there is a team together that actually cleans the lake now, they can't be everywhere all the time or at the lake every day cleaning up. So I feel like it has to be a little bit more of a community-based effort to put more hands to the plow and get some stuff done. Ellis Lake is unique in the sense that it's like the, the center jewel of our town, you know, and a lot of people that pass through it, if you pass by it at a distance, it is quite pretty. It's not until you get really close and walk around the lake that you notice that there's cracks and...
What are you trying to say?
I know. I'm being pretty blunt, I think. But cracks in the sidewalk, some parts of the sidewalk on the other side of the lake are kind of like this, so you have to be like an acrobat to walk around it. But I know that those things can, are things that we don't have in our control. We're not going to be able to go there and pave the sidewalks of the lake. But what we can do is not just bring you a complaint, but try to bring you some form of a solution. And the only thing that we can offer you is our hands, our feet, our willingness to jump in there and help, and be able to rally maybe some more members of the community. I know that there are other programs out there that are currently doing that, but I feel like we just need a little bit more hands to the plow. We did put something together. I know that we didn't realize until we got over there that we can't distribute it to you. So we'll figure that out, how to do that.
No, don't worry about it. Just get it to the city clerk, and they will come to us.
Okay, cool. And so we did, we have been having conversations with Recology this week as well. We specifically spoke with the general manager, Rigo Diaz, and he was giving us some support in putting a program together, or some support, additional support in maybe emptying the trash cans more often than what they are. And also, he was able to, you know, speaking what was already addressed, he actually sent us a picture of the trash cans that he would prefer to have around the lake, right? The ones that are sort of immovable. He said that he sort of shadowed the same concern, that the ones that are mobile, a lot of times the unhoused take them to...
Unhoused.
The unhoused, they take them to the...
Ethnisms.
Yes. They take them down to where they live, and so those go missing. Can't do anything about it, really. But the sheets that we put together basically list together our main objectives, you know, what we'd like to do, the materials that we need to pull it together, and the sort of a plan of how we're going to rally people to sort of help us out to be able to do that. So any information you guys have, any information that we can get, would be greatly appreciated in getting something going, some sort of a park adoption.
First of all, your three minutes was up a long time ago. No, 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 no. No, I want to compliment you. It was up a long time ago, and I didn't care, because the message is important. I think it might be, I'm trying to think if it'd be appropriate to put this as sort of an action or discussion item.
I think you could provide direction.
Discussion on the next agenda so that we could cover a number of things. For example, the, we have an Ellis Lake community. The Vice Mayor and I are on it. Mr. Jim Shad has taken the lead in doing planning for delivering, ultimate plan, delivering fresh water flowing through the lake. It will take funding from another agency, but the planning has to happen here. And responsibility, we believe, the council believes, has to happen here. So with thirty thousand that was left over from an earlier effort to get the lake cleaned up, and we've learned a lot, but quite as successful as we wanted them to be efforts on the water. And we want to build on that. And so at the last council meeting, we put up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of that thirty, so that planning could be done, and we could bring in a consultant. Jim is already busy in the one-armed paper hanger doing other stuff. And to get that planning done, to get that planning done, and so that we can present the options to third parties on the water. We have not, we are very conscious of the problems around the lake. And they are currently, the cleanliness issues, and walking through a bunch of goose poop, that's real slippery stuff, by the way.
Yes, it is.
I'm a duck hunter. I've fallen, I've slipped in that stuff. Anyway, and that is also in our longer-term planning to do things, dramatic things around the lake, water first than the other. In the meantime, keeping it clean. I'm thinking about having more of a public discussion on this, on the agenda at some point.
We can do that.
But what were you going to say, Jim?
We could do that, but I would also like to get your information, and Dan and I can meet with you, look at how we can structure some of your assistance through the Adopt a Park program, what resources would be needed. We're very keen on getting work done out there, and we may have some other projects and activities going on around the lake that may be of interest to you as well.
Excellent.
So if Nicole has your info, she can get us scheduled.
We've been waiting for you guys. This is great. So we will get ahold of you.
And by the way, the...
We have a great plan for you.
The city attorney here, his firm's office is right on the lake, right next door to my home. And maybe the two of us can voluntarily, at least keep the parts behind us clean. Okay, no, I love the fact that you came out. Thank you very much. That was inspiring. Madam Clerk.
No further speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We now come to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine and are therefore approved by one motion unless a council member or the city manager first requests that the matter be removed for separate consideration. What is the will of the council? Move to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay, we go to the discussion and action calendar. This is very much like the earlier calendar. In this, except on this calendar, all matters in this section will be discussed and acted on individually. Members of the public may request to speak on each of these matters. If you're here, visit the city clerk. You can get a speaker's card. You're online, raise your hand, and you will be gotten to. When called upon, you can address the city council. Let's see if you have any documentation you'd like to distribute to the council. Please mail it to City Clerk, 526 C Street, Marysville, California. And the opportunity for public comment will be presented on each item. Okay, the first matter is item number seven on the posted agenda, and that is discussion of a recommended noise ordinance. This is just a discussion, particularly as it relates to highway traffic and construction noise near noise-sensitive land uses. Okay. And since this was requested by me, I'm just going to spout off and say why I brought it up. We're looking at certain areas of town, and let's look at Highway 20 between the city limits and Buchanan Street. Where Highway 20 is right in people's backyards. And the noise radiates not only directly from the traffic, but reflects off of the levee. And I walked that neighborhood, those neighborhoods heavily when I was campaigning for mayor. And I was just saddened by how difficult it is to live with all that. And then there's other noise issues. B Street, which is Highway 20, produces an enormous amount of noise, as does E Street, Ninth Street, Tenth Street, these highways. And we are experiencing additional work planned and otherwise by the Caltrans on those projects. And rather than wait till a general plan update to get a more specific noise ordinance, would that be the proper way of saying it, Counselor? On the books, at the general plan update, I asked that we put this on the agenda for a, as a discussion item, and that as a discussion item, I would request that the city attorney be directed to, and planning staff be directed to come up with a draft ordinance that is appropriate to the city of Marysville, and present it at a council meeting in the near future, hopefully the next meeting if we can get a draft. And am I okay on that, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think because it's a zoning ordinance amendment, we might need to go to the Planning Commission for recommendation.
Whatever the steps are, let's jump, no, we have to jump through the hoops.
Yeah.
But if we don't jump through the hoops, you know, longest journey, first step thing? Well, this is the first step. Okay. Okay, so we're on it then.
Great. I have a short presentation for you again.
Oh, look at you. Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm Kathy Pease, planning consultant of the city. We are bringing this discussion item forward to see about drafting the noise ordinance. Currently, the city does not have a noise standard. A noise ordinance would allow the city to set a standard for new development and assist in environmental review for new projects. So noise can be characterized as loud, unpleasant, or irritating, that may interfere with the ability to conduct certain activities. Next slide. This might be hard to read. It just gives an indication about how loud typical construction equipment can be. You see that, you know, hammer drills are extremely loud, over 110 decibels. And I'll talk about what a decibel is in a minute. Next slide. So sound is expressed in decibels, which determines how loud an activity or an existing condition is. So it's a measurement of sound, and it's on a logarithmic scale. So noise perception, generally a three-decibel change can be noticed. A 10-decibel change would be perceived as a doubling of the noise level. Next slide. So the scale, like I said, is logarithmic. I can't say that. And so when sound level is doubled, it increases by three dB regardless of the initial sound level. So a three dB increase is a doubling of noise. So if you have 60 decibels and you add 60 decibels, the resulting noise level is 63 decibels. Same for instance, if it's 80 decibels, which is extremely loud, adding another 80 decibels will result in an 83-decibel noise level. Next slide.
What's the threshold of pain? Is it like 110?
That definitely is painful. I would say when you get over 85, you start to notice it more, sense of it to it. And so long-term damage can occur when you get over 100. Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question. I understand where you're going with this, and if I'm in here.
Please.
Okay, I understand where you're kind of going with this, and I appreciate the information. I'm a little intrigued on your math, so...
It's not my math, and I'm not a math person. I'm just telling you what the engineers have told me.
Okay.
So I can get back to you if you have a question, but I, yeah.
We'll save it for another time. Thank you.
I ran a technology company, and the engineers would always talk in dBs, and it was always Greek to me. But it's basically a log scale that moves like that.
I was just asking, because I have a decimeter at my business, and it's quite often up in the 135 range. Yeah, but it's not for my business. It's adjoining my business. Thank you.
In California, noise levels are often expressed in day-night average, or LDN, which describes the noise exposure. And it's an average that gives a penalty for noise at night. So it adds a 10-decibel penalty for noise that occurs between 10:00 PM and 7:00 in the morning to compensate for increased sensitivity during the quieter evening hours. So jurisdictions usually use that to set a standard. Next slide. Individual agencies can establish their own noise standards. For instance, Caltrans standard for construction noise is 86 dBA, and they show that as being acceptable in the nighttime. Next slide. Interestingly enough, though, the State of California Land Use Compatibility Noise Guidelines shows that decibels, average decibels, are normally acceptable for residential or other sensitive uses in the 50 to 60-decibel category. It's conditionally acceptable in 55 to 70. It's normally unacceptable for 70 to 75 average dBA. And they call out that it's clearly unacceptable if it's above 75 to 85. Next slide. So we are proposing changes for highway traffic and construction noise to set a standard for the city of Marysville for 65 LDN for exterior noise and 45 LDN for interior noise. Projects that come before Marysville that exceed that standard would be required to do a noise analysis and come up with mitigation measures. Next slide. I realize this is very hard to show, but this is an example from Fresno that shows different land uses, what the acceptable noise level is, what the noise level would be to require a noise policies as part of that as well. So this concludes my presentation.
I have a question, Mayor.
Sir, go ahead.
So I see you have a chart, chainsaws, and other mechanical tools for construction. Is there a chart for motorcycles, non-muffler vehicles, and things as such as that? Where is this chart?
I can look into that. I have not seen a standard chart for automobiles or things like that.
Can you believe, I mean, thank you, and can you believe that?
Mr. Chair? Sir, I'm a little concerned about how we go about this. I mean, some of the things are obvious where we're talking about the trains or the highways or these things. But when you're saying the state has a 65-max dB, yet, yet a chop saw is 107, a chainsaw is 110, so does that mean I can't have the tree service come out and cut my tree down?
No, you absolutely...
How do you mitigate that?
You absolutely can, and I, that's a great question. Because these are day-night averages. They're 24 hours. So if you had a chainsaw for an hour at your house, it wouldn't exceed the 65 dB. It's an average over 24 hours.
Gotcha.
There's also that would, what I would consider single-event noise as well. It's not ongoing. It's a temporary nature. And so we typically don't set a standard for single events like that.
For example, a concert at Bryant Field.
Yeah, we would probably put in the noise ordinance that entertainment uses are exempt from the noise ordinance. Businesses as well. You know, we don't want to constrain ongoing operations or the ability to do businesses. But what we will want to do is we, if we have a residential use that goes in next to a business, we want to make sure that on that project, they have rated windows so that interior maintains the standards. So again, I, we want flexibility. It's not intended for slowing down business.
So some of the one-time that the mayor brought up, for instance, concert at Bryant Field, those are going to be more restricted by the hours, right?
Correct.
The hours of service, rather than the volume as much.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Question, comment?
Please.
We want to encourage entertainment and entertainment venues in the downtown district, but we also want to encourage residential housing.
Yes.
I live in the downtown district, and I am surrounded by venues that have entertainment. And I actually like that there is sound. It does end at 11:00. And we want to encourage this continues, and we want to make sure that that doesn't get altered by additional residential housing that could then discourage entertainment. We want to make sure that happens. That is what happened in the downtown South Market San Francisco district, which used to be nightclubs until apartment buildings went in and they ended the nightclubs. And we don't want that to happen here.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's residential encouragement.
Let me continue. We want Marysville to be somewhat of a Nashville for music, and we want that to continue. And we want to build off of that, and we don't want our sound ordinance to... and we want to build off of that, and we don't want our sound ordinance to alter that. I live right next door to an event space, and they party until 10:30, 11:00, and, and then it's over, and it's great. It, it brings people into the community, and that's what we want to encourage. I just wanted to bring that up when we do this.
So, can, can we have a motion directing council and management to put together a, a draft, go through the proper steps, obviously?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, Madam Quirk. Thank you so much, Kathy. Important. Okay, oh, here we go. The next matter. Oh, well, we jumped right through that without, okay. A lease agreement for Bryant Field. Recommendation, pass a motion to approve a lease agreement for Bryant Field between the city of Marysville and Highlands Community Charter School. Mr. Dan Flores, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'll give you a little bit of background first, and then I'm going to have the pleasure and honor of introducing to you two gentlemen who run Highlands Community Charter School, so bear with me for just a moment. So, first, the background. Highlands Community Charter School is a public adult community charter school with a strong presence in Sacramento and the San Diego region, as well as a branch located right here in the city of Marysville. An important component of the mission of Highlands is building legacies leading to self-sufficiency and generational change through strong community partnerships. Highlands has expressed a desire to lease Bryant Field as a training and event facility, further enhancing its partnership and commitment with the city of Marysville. Little bit of discussion and analysis on this, as you have a copy with you. Highlands Community Charter School is an adult charter school with over 13,000, actually, I believe it's 14,000 students, and 30 locations throughout the state of California. Highlands has demonstrated strong commitment and substantially invested in improving and maintaining Bryant Field. Highlands' commitment and investment have made it possible for the Marysville Drakes baseball team to safely play baseball on the field. The Drakes are part of a larger independent professional baseball league called the Pecos League, with 16 teams throughout the United States, including eight teams in California. The improvements have also created a more attractive environment and other potential events, or for other potential events at the ballpark, as you mentioned tonight, some like concerts and other things that could happen. Highlands recognized this benefit of training students at Bryant Field and utilizing the stadium for large events for their, related to their school. The city created a mutually beneficial lease agreement. The lease agreement is to be effective May 1st, 2023, as Highlands did some maintenance and improvements work beginning on that date. Some key terms in this lease agreement, which I want to call to your attention. The lease is for three years with an option for renewal. Two, the lease rate is $2,000 per month with 3% increases each year. Three, the lease Highlands will be solely responsible for all maintenance, or the leasing Highlands will be solely responsible for all maintenance and city-approved improvements for the ballpark or the field. And number four, the leasing is responsible for all utility expenses, including water, sewer, electricity, gas, and garbage during the term of the lease. And number five, the city will maintain the right to continue holding community and other reserved events at the ballpark under the terms indicated in the lease agreement. And number six, all billboards, banners, and other forms of advertising, including electronic billboards, must be pre-approved by the city. And number seven, the leasing will have the naming rights subject to the city approval, provided Bryant Field remains part of the name selected by the leasing. So, I'd like to, at this time, introduce Mr. Mike Reed and Doc Smith from Highlands.
Thank you very much.
I'll introduce myself.
Thank you for being here. I've been very happy to meet you all and, and learn about your organization, and so, please share more information, then we'll have some public comment and staff and council comments and questions.
Fantastic.
First of all, good evening, Mayor Branscombe, Vice Mayor Vata Kavoli, council members, city officials, and our incredible first responders. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present this evening. We're going to break this in two ways. First of all, my name is Mike Reed. Currently, I serve as the Senior Alumni Relations Director for Highlands Community Charter and Technical School located in Sacramento. I also serve in another capacity as the Board President for a nonprofit which is called the Doc Smith Legacy Foundation. The sole purpose of that foundation is to find ways to scholarship our students, enhance them with entrepreneurial outcomes, and to provide resource for, as we call it, the Highlands community, the greater Highlands community. And I think, you know, this, this should start with, with really this idea of a multitude of thank-yous, because the emphasis of this, what happened is that actually, Mr. Flores, our Community Development Director, reached out to me, knowing a little bit about the school, the background of the school, and said that there were some things that possibly we might be able to volunteer or help with over at Bryant Field. And again, I'm a U of A city resident, lived through the majority of my life, my memories for Bryant Field are very much like many people that are sitting in here tonight. You go all the way back into the 30s, if you want to, or 40s, when the field was there. I remember as a, a child, walking through the sub-area and being able to look at the playing field at, at field level and thinking the men out there were giants. And of course, I wanted to be like them, right? There was a day that I wanted to be like them. But as we're going to see in this, this short presentation, then I'm going to turn it over to my boss, Mr. Murdock Smith. We all refer to Murdock as Doc, so you know that, he's Executive Officer for the school. And Ms. Nicole, I'm going to ask if you maybe just open that up, and I'm going to take you a few slides into this, and I think it's a good place to start with, where was Bryant Field, and where did the effort come into this? Because the city took an incredibly, I think, bold approach when you decided to encase or put the new fencing up at the field, right? You saw the gem that it is, and it is a gem, and I'll see if she can pull that up for us, because I wanted you to see that. Oh, okay, we'll see if we can get that up. Oh, she's going to get into what's new in Chrome. Well, she's doing that, too. Let me, let me also say that the original conversation started with wanting to support the Drakes, and I want to make sure that the council knows, as well as the public, our efforts here to support both entities, the city of Marysville and Drakes Baseball. Again, it's really exciting to have another professional team that's come back into this area and is putting forth an effort to provide professional baseball and entertainment. And so, our first response to this was to actually work with the Drakes to become their premier sponsor for them and provide money for them here, and also in partnership with the city, with the ability to go ahead and, and start the work that they thought was necessary with the field. I can wait. Doc, you want to talk about the school and actually give some background on that?
Sure, Mayor. Okay.
The council has to wait until you get the presentation So, your motivation, your, your organization's motivation in, in engaging in this?
Sure, absolutely. I, I can start with the conversation with that. The idea was, as we looked at the field and knowing what we do with students, a big part of what we do with our students is this, you have to be 22 years or older in order to enroll in the school and not have a recognized U.S. High School diploma, which also means that students that have a GED can come in to the school, and we will actually take that student and give them credit toward their diploma work. But again, that idea is to actually get that student a diploma. We couple that to career technical education, in other words, training those students in a number of careers that we have available to them at no cost to that student. So, again, the idea is to take a tax taker and make them a taxpayer, right? To take them from survivability to sustainability, as we like to say. And so, with that in mind, when we started to look at the field, the overall thought of the field was, we could take our students into this and actually make it as a living lab, teach them to operate machinery, teach them to take care in facility, a care in a facility, understand things about, might, things that might go with parks and recreation, tourism, and their part for provide a resource to the city, to the county, to the neighboring county, with employees that are work-ready to come into careers and occupations that may be here locally. In addition to that, as we also thought about this, remember, we have already an established campus over here at Notre Dame, which has, has about 150 students that are local students in that campus, and we have about another 80 students that are at our, our facility in U of A City, which is located right off, I'm sorry, Gray Avenue, right across from St. Isidore's, right there. So, thinking about that, that we already had an established presence, thinking about that we are a school that utilizes the we are, work for.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you and the opportunity.
But let me also. For an extended partnership with the city of Marysville.
Well, you're doing a wonderful job in making the presentation. If we don't get, if we don't get it on the internet, I'll tell you what, you'll be invited back, but you're making, you're making a great case.
Of another state, actually, we're about 65 locations.
Considering, he can give you a little background where we started.
We enroll about 200 new students every week. And our intention here, matter of fact, when you go to about Notre Dame School, you get to see us repainting it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And re-landscaping it here in the next couple of weeks.
Vice Mayor.
A lot worse. And we're looking for two or three more spaces in U of A City in a couple.
Seven months or something like that. The school's coming up on a decade, which is an incredible thing, considering, he can give you a little background where we started and where the school growth has taken us.
Welcome, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mike, and esteemed guests, and Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Murdock Smith, people call me Doc, or a lot worse, but for this chamber, let's keep it a Doc. I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you and the opportunity to partner with you. That's our, that's our wish, and I think the collaboration between the city and Highlands has been as good as, as good as we've ever had, and we're in many locations, excuse me, of another state, and actually, we're about 65 locations. We enroll about 200 new students every week, and our intention here, matter of fact, when you go to about Notre Dame School, you get to see us repainting it.
You will be invited.
And re-landscaping it here in the next couple of weeks. It's a bit of an eyesore right now after COVID. Before COVID, about 300 students, and we're looking for two or three more spaces in U of A City and a couple more satellites here in, in Marysville. I'm a longtime Sacramento resident, but lived many parts of the state, and I worked 28 and a half years in law enforcement, and I was everything in charge of statewide gang apprehension units, to programs. I put together some of the first apprehension, I don't know if you guys are old enough to remember, C-CAD and things like that. I was the first person to be involved in a statewide effort to get collaboration between cities and counties throughout the state. I've been very impressed with the work of the city, not that that matters, but I, I really appreciate, I've been up, my prior career in this career, in a lot of places. Fortunately, I think, just hearing and following the local politics here the last few months before you started to get into this, I know.
Doc, Doc, this, we have a really full agenda tonight.
I'll be, I'll let you.
No, 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 what, what I'm saying is, you will be invited back to make a fuller presentation, but I think we can dispose of your, of your business before the council. I'm guessing in a favorable action without this, but.
And we certainly appreciate it.
Rather than fool around with this in a busy agenda, I would want to invite you back for the presentation af- after your, after your approval, because I like the idea of you presenting and showcasing this, and we could put it on the front end of a, of a future meeting.
Maybe we do a big community event, or, I was just out there, spreading sand all over the field, about two truckloads, so, in a few weeks, over the weekend, so, yeah, anything that, please, the council, and even if they come back, but we'd appreciate a favorable vote and, and your consideration.
We appreciate you all, I mean, it's, you all leave in your wake improved properties and improved people, God bless you.
Thank you.
To the, to the Chair. I just got one real quick question.
Yes, sir.
It, will Notre Dame is, does it tend to look like it'll be your permanent home?
Oh, yes, it was here prior to COVID, and that's why we're going to do a big capital investment in there.
Let's get public comment out of the way here, and I'm not trying to blow you off, I just.
No, no, no.
You have a presentation to make.
I sit through board meetings a lot, so I appreciate the gravity.
I have a real keen sense of how this matter's going to go forward, but, and when you get a chance to make a, when you make your presentation, Madam, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, bless you. So, let's, why don't we open it up for public comment?
And Mayor, there are no comment, no speakers outside.
Now we have, now we can go to council questions and comments. Mr. Vice Mayor.
It lasts a lot longer than that.
Me, too.
I hope, I believe that it will, so, this is, this is exactly, Bruce and I are sitting on the REC Development Committee, as we were talking about the ball field and where it's going to go in the future, and this type of partnership is exactly what we were looking for, something that is long, something that's invested, partnership that's, that's capitally invested, and I'm thrilled to see this come to us, so.
Thank you, me, too. You know, I just talked to Flores over the weekend, covered in sand, but I told him, my goal is to make like, we don't call it really field, a sutter landing field, because my experience, wherever we go, especially if something looks really nice, people go just
No, no questions, I just want to say it's, it's, I'm majorly in favor of this. I have went through the lease pretty thoroughly, and to be able to partner with an organization like you guys, I'm totally looking forward to the next three years, and think it's going to be just a great partnership, and I hope that it lasts a lot longer than that, and.
Me, too.
I hope, I believe that it will, so, this is, this is exactly, Bruce and I are sitting on the REC Development Committee, as we were talking about the ball field and where it's going to go in the future, and this type of partnership is exactly what we were looking for, something that is long, something that's invested, partnership that's, that's capitally invested, and I'm thrilled to see this come to us, so.
Thank you, me, too. You know, I just talked to Flores over the weekend, covered in sand, but I told him, my goal is to make like, like, we don't call it really field, a sutter landing field, because my experience, wherever we go, especially if something looks really nice, people go just because it's a nice venue, and it's such a jewel with the lake and the park, and I think it is, I think cities throughout California would love to have something like this, you know, in that area like that.
Yeah, so I'm very excited for a potential partnership with you guys, and I love what Highland is doing for young adults and so forth, and just helping them become taxpayers, if you will. That's an awesome thing, because sometimes they tend to get forgot after they leave the high school age. I'm very excited about the fact that I can, I can meander on, I would like to make a motion for there.
Again, I, as I mentioned earlier, organization, you and your organization leave a wake of improved properties and, more importantly, improved people in your wake. And the Bryant Field, Ellis, it's part of that Ellis Lake region, Bryant Field, Ellis Lake, and the developments along B Street, that is going to become a, it's already important. It's going, I believe it's going to become even more important to the city and to the region.
I agree.
Particularly with Bryant Field as an entertainment maker, and love the idea of you all being here.
It's working.
Questions?
We can come back and give you another version.
We've got a pretty full agenda tonight, and we've, we've, I think.
It's a fair, don't worry, Mayor, it's a fair beauty, that's all we're going to tell.
Tell you what, give, give us the five-minute, show us the pictures only. Just the, just the pictures, I'm good with those.
Well, I think that the summary on it was, it was a, the place has great bones, but it just kind of has some deferred maintenance that needed to be taken care of, and, and I think we tried to do some of that, and you can scroll through them, and I think. Oh, you could, you could, you could just scroll through them, and of course, that was a sales thing, that was a locker room.
Oh, it's so much better looking, everything you've done has been wonderful.
Yeah, and I think that our, our people that they, you know, the city most rose, or Marysville seals all throughout the planet, it looks really nice.
Yeah.
Your AC, uh, hiddenness now works as well.
Yeah.
Where we started. Aerial view, we took with a drone. Old signage, basically, uh, reconverted. That's what the dugout looked like before. Huge shout out to the SAC City College Baseball Team that came up and put in probably well over 200 volunteer man-hours, working on the infield with us.
That's great.
You can see, uh, the old fencing that was down along the side, and we pinned and did the infrastructure on this, put this back. So again, it's now in corrugated fashion, and you can see that we started working with old wooden fence and replaced, keep right on going anytime you want. There's SAC City working out there, you, the city of Marysville folks helping us, of course, right there in collaboration.
The ci, the city was fantastic on the help and everything. They were complete partners the whole way.
Lights coming back up. You can see now a little bit more of the safety paint, signage, what this all looks like. Back to that, sort of a difference. You know, I think, uh, you know, where I believe in this is, uh, the, uh, the care team is just a leading for us, and the care team is for you. Uh, we see it to be an incredible gem. See what this looks like now, and, took one more slide there. We have some outside banners that are getting ready to be put up.
Leave it on that slide, please. Look at that region. You're, you're looking at that region, that region can really become a mecca, uh, for new, new activity, and Bryant Field, Bryant Highlands Field, whatever it's going to be called, is, is, uh, going to be center, center point.
You figure in an eight, in an eight-county region, there's not one baseball field or open, uh, event, other than some football stadiums around it that have the capacity. This, the closest is 2,500, it's over 4,000, so this can hold, as you guys have already done great things out in there in the past with MMA and everything else, you'll really be able to do a nice out there.
So we thank you guys for the opportunity. And we.
Love you.
We incredibly appreciate the vision the council has for this, that we believe that this is absolutely essential to your group.
Good, Chair. One comment?
Sure.
So I, I appreciate you guys so much in so many ways, because, uh, I know that Councilman Budakavoli and I spent a little bit of personal time doing some repairs up there, and then when you guys came in afterwards, um, and pretty much took over, I was very relieved. I have no idea, uh, what financial aspect you've really gone into it, but I, I do know that there was probably, you said, about 150 gallons of green paint put on that place, and, uh, I, I thank you for that, because that's a lot of paint. So, with, with all that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I was going to give the credit, I was going to give the honor of making the motion and second to the Parks and Recreation people.
Whatever. How about, how about we, well, how about we second it together?
We'll second it together.
There we go. Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Bye.
And God bless you. You guys are great. Your organization's great. We love this relationship.
Uh, one last thing, I think you'll see by your seats today, uh, one of the things we wanted to do for the Drake's team was to provide them with some things that, you know, we're welcoming them to the city as a, as an official baseball club, and, uh, they had, with some, uh, great travel bags for them, we made sure that, uh, this group was taken care of as well. Uh, one of the cool things, features in that is, uh, there's a little plug-in, you can charge, uh, inserted battery, and it will charge your phone, so you can travel. Travel with the Drake's, go to the away games, too. That's what we say. So you guys enjoy.
I kept kicking it.
Real happy to see you. Awesome. Okay. Please agreement. Okay, now we have a public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. If you wish to speak, uh, raise your hand, uh, get a speaker's card, or raise your hand via Zoom, and we will go forward. The first matter, Community Development Block Grant Program of Potential Applications and Recommendations and Direction to Staff. Recommendation, pass a motion to, one, open the public hearing and receive public comment regarding the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and possible activities and projects to be considered for funding under the 2023 Notice of Funding Availability process, and, two, discuss potential applications, consider recommendations, and provide direction for staff to prepare an application. Ms. Jennifer Stachinski, Finance Director, ma'am, would you please tell us what that is all about?
Okay, so I'm going to give you a very brief overview, and then we're going to have Beth Dodd with Adams Ashby do a presentation to go over the overall process.
Let's keep everything very brief.
Okay. So, the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, is publishing their next NOFA here in the next coming weeks and months. So part of the, to apply for the funding and meet the application needs, we have to hold a public hearing to be able to determine what the best use is, and then to see what the public feels to do for this project. So with that, I'm going, again, we're going to hand it over to Beth Dodd, and she's going to go through the process for the application.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I will be brief, I promise. Um, my name is Beth Dodd with Adams Ashby Group. We work with the city to administrate, um, community development block grants. Um, these are the funds that are allocated to the city by application by the state to support programs and projects that benefit low to moderate income community members. Um, we have the team working with the city, with the city manager, Jennifer, um, Community Development, Dan Flores, we've got Vincenzo, right, did I say it right? Um, and John Mallon. Um, we, they have worked together with the application for the 2019, 2020 grant that has been on, um, the waitlist. Um, so to be in compliance for resubmitting that application that the city is going to be awarded, we just have to update the resolution, and then the city will receive the $3.5 million grant that they applied for and have been waitlisted, and then we get to move forward with that one. So we need to ask that the council will update the resolution for that one.
I do want to note that that was item, sorry, I, thank you, item five on the consent, and that has been taken care of, so we have passed that resolution.
Perfect. So that's the really good news, is that you guys already have $3.5 million coming. Now we have to talk about, that's how I like to start a presentation. Um, now we have to talk about the 2023 application that is coming out the end of July. So, I've already skipped forward, we're on the one that starts with review. Okay. The city of Marysville has successfully implemented grants that have benefited community members, a code enforcement grant, housing programs, purchasing the wild land fire truck, and supporting the needs of seniors in the community with a dine-at-home program that has helped slow the spread of COVID-19. Um, as we, oh, the next one, sorry. Um, we already talked about the fact that we are updating the 2019 application, and you guys are going to be, going to be getting the $3.5 million with the new resolution, and then we just turn everything in. Um, the next round of funding for CDG, CDBG program will occur the end of July 2023, according to HCD. The city of Marysville can apply at this time for up to $3.25 million. The council, to be in compliance, the council needs to hear from other interested parties in the community to see how they would best like to proceed. Um, I'm going to tell you about the funding limits that we have to deal with. There's, um, like I said, $3.25 million is available, so the city can submit up to two applications. They can do one over the counter and one public service. Um, or competitive application, sorry, which includes public service and a planning grant. And those can be up to $250,000 each. Um, the over-the-counter applications are just reviewed for threshold items and approved on a first-come, first-served basis. Over-the-counter applications include housing, public facilities, infrastructure, and economic development programs. The city can apply for up to $3.25 million in public facilities and infrastructures, or 1.5 million in housing program and economic development programs. These are a lot of numbers. Um, the city, the next one, I, the city does need to look at what types of programs they're going to want to do and how they're going to want to implement. There are programs already going and covering a lot of the need already known in the city. Um, if the council decides to go forward with a public service program, those applications are done through a scoring system, um, and the city will need to make sure that the needs and readiness components are completely covered at the time of application. Anytime there is a public service program, it needs to show a new or increased benefit to low to moderate income community members. All right, the timeline is tight, so they are, every time they meet with us, they tell us a new date. Right now, it's, um, the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, right now, they're saying July 31st. After that, there's a 30-day waiting period where the application can be reviewed. Uh, after that 30 days, the application opens for the competitive applications, which are your public service and your planning grants, and at that same time is when we are going to resubmit the application for the 2019 that has been on the waitlist. Once that happens, then around October 1st is when we can submit a new application for an OTC.
Good.
So, and these are all rough dates. Um, once all of those things are done, we can plan to receive the contract early 2024. Um, we need to clear special conditions, January, February, prior to the contract issuance, and be ready to bid for projects 90 days after the contract is issued, which means any project that we decide to apply for needs to be shovel-ready. Program implementation will occur and process for 36 months per contract terms. So the next steps would be to prepare for the 2023 funding application and have council action that is required for the application. Any questions?
Real smart person once said that every specialty is an assault on the lay tongue.
Mm-hmm.
He just blew that one by me.
All the acronyms.
No, it's, it's very complicated, very complicated. I, I cover, I understood parts of it. Um, Mr. City Manager. And thank you, thank you.
So, I'll, I'll try and summarize. The, uh, cur, earlier consent item was approving a resolution to allow us to move forward with the existing streets project in East Marysville that was submitted quite some time ago, and we have been on a waiting list. So in July, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, we would, uh, submit for that $3.5 million project, and we have the opportunity to submit for up to $3.25 million worth of other projects within the CDBG eligibility realm, which is fairly broad. Um, and this public hearing is to, uh, notify the public of the funding opportunity and allow for public input either at the meeting or subsequent to the meeting prior to applying. Then my understanding is there's another round in January timeframe, January of next year, that would allow for another $3.25 million worth of applications to be submitted. So, uh, we, we will be soliciting public input. I can tell you, staff's recommendation, uh, in absence of the public input, uh, would initially be submit for the 3.5, that's pretty much a given. We have another streets project in East Marysville identified, very similar, uh, that would consume 3.25. That's what we could submit in July. Uh, I know we talked about the train quiet zones, but we would not have that project ready, shovel-ready by July of this. So we would defer that to the January submittal, uh, and/or any other projects that the public brought forth and the council deliberated on and chose to do, including, you know, we could do some parks. My thought on quiet zones is that may not consume the entire 3.25, so there may be a second application that we could submit in another area. Now, if we don't get the 3.25 in July for the Second Street project, we would probably want to consider applying for that in the January timeframe. So that's a summarization I would give of the opportunity. And what you're approving, uh, actually, I don't think you're approving anything in this item at this point, correct?
All right. This is.
We're just having the public.
It's to give us direction so that we know what to put in the application and start working on that.
So, in, in the documentation that was provided to council was previous select or, or ideas on, um, uh, potential projects, and, um, I think it's in everybody's packet. So, certainly would want council's input now. Do we open this up?
First, first, we have to go to the public.
Yeah, public first.
Okay. We have, the presentations have been made, and now the matter is open to the public. Public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody wishing to speak in the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor, only one speaker, and that will be John Nicoletti.
Mr. Nicoletti, welcome.
Hi, folks. It's really great to see you working hard for the city. It's a good meeting. Uh, I'm here, uh, representing housing, and when you have, uh, a project or element like this that you're studying, through the OTC grant, there's generally three components. There's public works, there's economic development, and there's housing. So, it's like a pie-eating contest for Dan Vincenzo and me, and traditionally, predictably, housing always gets the smallest amount of pie out of that. We know that. We're not here to try to compete with that. What we're suggesting is that currently, um, there's something different about the home grant that's going on right now that you have contracted with Habitat for Humanity to administer in the city of Marysville. We're having like very little, if any, success at all. The last round that we did with home grant in the city of Marysville, you guys put $500,000 into housing, uh, through that program, and it was super fast, super successful. We can't seem to find residents that have fully permitted homes. Right? They've done add-ons, they've added electrical, they've done unpermitted activities, and in the home grant, you had to make everything current, and so it's restricted. It also has to be below $345,000 in property value, which is kind of tough these days. And then, of course, you have to qualify. So, uh, we've been going way into these interviews, we've been getting way down the road with these folks, only to find that they are uninterested in coming to the modern standard for their facilities. So it's just a weird thing. But where we're seeing, uh, people falling through the cracks are water heaters, just some double-pane windows, just some upgrades that will make the house sound and keep that senior in the home and just make it work. So, our scheme is for you to consider in this project as it comes forward, shaving over like maybe $40,000. We put that towards our housing services department, and then we leverage that with our, uh, range of funding to get all those little easy pickup things that don't rise to the home grant. Uh, it has to be a big project, and it's very complex for the homeowner, but, um, there's still a great need. There's just a bunch of stuff. So that's it. It's just a pitch to just put that in your mind and think about it as you go forward. It's just a pitch to just put that in your mind and think about it as you go forward.
Thank you, John.
Yep, and I've got 30 seconds to say, Salav and Vincenzo, amazing work on B Street.
We're not going to cut you off. You can go overtime. Oh, here's the bomb.
Your Public Works team comes out on Saturday morning, and they're full of high spirits, and they do great work for the city on the off hours. It's really a beautiful site. They have a lot of interest.
Bravo. Thank you, John. Madam Clerk, any other comments?
None this evening, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Then, public hearing is now closed. But with comment, council, any questions, comments from the council?
I mean, I would say that we should advise staff to move forward with pursuing this grant. I think that we should take into account Mr. Nicoletti's suggestion, and that he ought to, you know, maybe communicate with Jennifer as application moves forward and take a look at that. Pretty simple to me.
Any other comments? Obviously.
Yes, sir. So, interesting, the list that you presented is the one from previous council in December of 2019.
And that was just to give you guys a taste of what you could do.
Correct, and it's pretty unanimous up to the point that roads was a big thing there, as well as, you know, streetlights, street facades. Beyond the shovel-ready projects you have on roads, what else do we have on cue?
Well, just my thought process on CDVG in particular is because it's somewhat of an onerous process. Streets repaving projects are fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Playground equipment, pretty straightforward as far as getting shovel-ready by that timeframe. We're talking a quiet zone, train, lot of players involved, and
Too much.
Very difficult to do. When we get into major building type of re tabs and stuff, those tend to be more complicated and more difficult to get ready in the timeframe we're talking about. The services type of activities, I think we, staff, we typically have the manpower to do that, but a lot of times we partner with CISOs and can do something like that. I think a program, as John mentioned, is fairly straightforward, and we can potentially do some activities like that as well.
Just to be clear, the street project that you were talking about in East Marysville is the one over there off of Bryant, Bryden Lane and all that kind of stuff? Seventeenth, Bryant?
Bryden Lane, Spurbeck Way, Houston, it's a little triangular area.
I see.
And those are pretty easy for our engineering contractor to price out.
Okay. It's all good.
Okay, the agenda item provides that we should discuss potential applications, consider recommendations, and provide direction for staff to prepare an application.
We are looking for input from council on what type of projects they would like to see.
Well, you just discussed a number of items. Is that how you plan to proceed?
That is my recommendation.
Okay, that's important to know, because then the question would be, direction for the presentation that the city manager made. Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Please, please go ahead.
Is there consideration what we shared by John Nicoletti? We might be able to talk about helping out with that kind of thing.
I, assuming it's CDVG eligible and we can figure out how to make it work, if we're talking $40,000, $50,000, I think that's due.
It's got to be, it's got to be eligible, thank you. Forgot about that. And she's shaking her head no. Sorry, John.
I would suggest then Thank you. That the direction include discretion for the city manager to filter through, and if he deems necessary, come back to the council for specific guidance. Otherwise, we grant him discretion along the lines of his previous discussion on the matter.
A question for our consultant, is the train quiet zones an OTC type?
Yes.
Does that mean bad news or good news for the train quiet zones?
Well, in January, I anticipate we could apply for the train quiet zones if we are ready fairly close, but there may be another category we could apply for if we're not expending the full 3.25 million.
Again, again, management, according to the resolution, would have discretion in accord with any input he deems appropriate to reach out to the council for. How's that?
Jennifer, is that, does that follow the process that we need to follow?
I do believe so. Yes, it does.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What's the will of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very kindly. Okay, the public hearing continues. Next matter, approve ordinance, appropriately numbered ordinance approving amendments to chapters 8.04 and 8.13 of the Marysville Municipal Code. Recommendation, pass a motion to, one, introduce an ordinance for the first reading. Two, set July 18, 2023 for the second reading and consideration for adoption. Then here's the fun part. Three, waive the first and second reading of the ordinance authorizing the changes, amending portions of 803 of the Marysville Municipal Code entitled General Regulations, and 8.13 of the Marysville Municipal Code entitled Penalty for Violations. Chief of Police, Mr. Christian Sacks, would you please make sense of this for us?
I'll make it short and sweet. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, just as the recommendation states, basically to clarify, we're making an amendment to the ordinance, 804, specifically 804-138. It was a duplicated subsection. We removed that duplication and added a new narrative in there. The new narrative is in response to complaints from our community and reference to dog walkers walking their dogs and their dogs defecating and depositing feces on private property of another. So we are going to be requiring them to clean up after themselves and their dogs before they leave such areas. So there's an amendment to that section. To make the dog owners responsible for cleaning up after their animals. Yeah, and then, then also, within the same recommendation in 8.13, we do have some correctable violations for animal control services, leash laws, licensing, and stuff like that, for correctable violations for a lower fine amount if they do take care of those violations. They weren't specifically noted within the penalty section, so we've identified five sections that are a correctable violation for a reduced fine amount. And so we added those for specificity into this ordinance for penalties. And so we're requesting this recommendation, and if this is approved this evening, it will reflect in the fee schedule, which is the second, or which is the last item on the agenda as well this evening.
Question, Chief. 8.13, which I appreciate the consideration for adjusting after correctable relations, but I don't see a monetary amount on there. Is that discretion as in like ministerly, or is that?
No, that'll be in the fee schedule on the last item that's adopted this evening, and they're all $50. So, right now in the, in the fee schedule, it's a $50 correctable fee, but it didn't list the specific sections that were allowed to be correctable, so we've identified those within the section that would apply to the fee schedule for that $50 reduced fee.
That's it, thank you, Chief.
Any other questions?
Chair.
Sir.
I got to share this because it reminds me of a really funny story that happened. Well, it was about a year ago, and I'm getting it early morning, and I'm hopping in my pickup truck to take off for the day. And I see this guy walking in front of my house with his dog. And sure enough, his dog, you know, he's got one of those extended leashes, the kind that stretch out like 15 feet or whatever, and his dog comes right out of my front yard to do his business. And the guy looks up and he sees me in the driveway getting in my pickup truck, and you can just see complete despair come over this guy, like, oh my gosh, this is happening, the property owner's right here, you know? So I look at it, squint my eyes a little bit, and I recognize the silhouette of the person, and I start to walk out towards the front, you know, towards the street, and he's nervous, you know, and he's reaching his pockets and everything. I go, hey, Eric, is that you? And he perks up like that, happened to be Eric Voden, my, my planning commission appointee. I said, don't worry about it, I'll clean it up for you. But how embarrassing, you know? I just thought, this reminded me of that, that time.
See, if you had sidewalks on your street, you wouldn't have that problem.
Okay, moving ahead. Any other questions or comments? Barring none, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this and pass it.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. You're going to stay up there. Oh, there you are again. Next matter on the agenda, number 11, approve ordinance, appropriately numbered ordinance approving amendment to chapter 9.50. Recommendation, pass a motion, one, introduce ordinance 9.50 for first reading, and two, set July 18, 2023 for second reading and consideration for adoption. And then, three, once again, waive the first and second reading of the ordinance authorizing the changes of chapter 9.50 of the Marysville Municipal Code. And four, transfer $10,000 from an appropriately numbered account for property maintenance and beautification to another account for code enforcement, code enforcement abatement actions in fiscal year 2324. That was a mouthful. That is the reading. Chief Sacks.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, so before you this evening is another ordinance clarification to section, chapter 950. It required clarification for administrative penalties and formats for hearing officers. As we established our code enforcement team and we move forward in this process, it's a four-step process, now that it's been clarified throughout this. City Attorney and I have been working diligently to get this put together to make it a more streamlined process and for clarification. So, the first step in our code enforcement process is a notice to correct. The second step is order to correct. Our third step is abatement warrant through the courts, and then the fourth step is a lien on the property. So we're going to give them notice of, to correct the violation. They'll have 15 days to correct it. If they don't, then there'll be a notice or an order to correct it from us. If they don't correct it, then we will proceed for abatement warrants, where we will actually go in and clean up the property pursuant to the guidelines, and then said monetary value of what we pursued during the abatement would be attached to a lien on the property. And so, our code needed to have some clarifications on the hearing process and the steps that we needed to take. At a future council meeting, we will be bringing a recommendation to you, as council has to appoint the third-party hearing officer, and we are in the works of that now, so in a real close future meeting, you'll be deciding on the hearing officer to finish up this process. In reference to the $10,000, we needed a fund in order to help start, kickstart the code enforcement abatements. As we start doing the abatements of the properties, we have to use our own forces or a contractor to go in and mitigate those abatements prior to putting the lien. And so therefore, the $10,000 would be transferred out of that
Got it.
beautification fund that we already had established, and just transferred over to code enforcement, so that way it'll help pay for it itself since there's no starter. In the staff report, I need to clarify, it states, or in this, yeah, staff report, it said that there's no dedicated court, code enforcement budget. We found out this morning that there is a code enforcement budget itself that was limited to some one-time funds under Fund 11 from some prior liens, I think back from 2015 that were established by a staff report that indicated that that money could be used for code enforcement itself. I think there's $36,000 in there for the one-time side of it, but we're asking for the $10,000 to help supplement that as we move forward. And then, we will obviously have that revolving as we move forward.
Thank you.
Hopefully our abatements will go back into it.
This matter is now open for public comment, Madam Clerk.
No speakers on this item, Mayor.
Matter is now closed for public comment. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so, you're saying there's already how much in the fund that you guys can start with?
In 2015, we found out this morning, in 2015, there's 38,000 that is in that account. It was specified from council at that point in time that, that those funds were, it was limited for just that funds itself to be utilized for abatement.
And so what, what your, the request here is that we do a $10,000 transfer now and then $10,000 every year to fund that?
Not every year. The recommendation would be the $10,000 now for it, and then what we're anticipating is throughout our code enforcement process, any of the fines and penalties that are assessed on properties and/or any liens that are placed on properties through our efforts, that once those liens are paid, that money, we would come back and go into that code enforcement count to help supplement all the future enforcement actions. So this is just to kickstart it, to get it going, because we have two big abatements coming.
So do, do we have some, something or some trail that shows along the way that when you've been doing this mitigation, you've been spending that kind of money? I mean, you're saying you're going to start with 38 grand.
We haven't, we haven't done any of the mitigation, so they have been non-compliant. So, we have code, we have over 120 open code enforcement cases now where we keep sending letters and they haven't abated the issue. So we have at least two of them, now that we're proceeding forward with, with our city attorney. And under this new process that needed to get clarified through the ordinance, when we go to get the abatement warrant from the court, once the court approves that abatement warrant, then we have to either use our own forces or contract other forces to go on that said property with that warrant and abate the issue. And we're going to need a funding source in order to pay for those services in order to do that. So these will be the first cases coming forward here in the near future.
So, I can, I understand that on a larger abatement. On a smaller abatement, when you take care of that, how does that work on a continued basis? I mean, for instance, you go in and you have a fire issue, let's say, and we go in and we take it down and abate that area, and there's been property leaned, and it just keeps coming back and over and over and over. How do we handle that at this point now? Or have we even handled it at this point?
We haven't, we haven't put any liens on any property.
Fire was probably a bad example, but an unsightly.
Right. So currently, right now, we know, we send them a notice that they need to correct it, and then we keep sending them notices month after month after month after month. We haven't gone the abatement warrant process because it needed clarification within the ordinance, and so that's what our city attorney and I have been working on to clarify that and put that language within the code. And we need to have a hearing officer appointed, which we haven't in the years past. So once we solidify this process, then we'll be able to go do those abatement actions on those. The smaller ones might be able to help our own forces, maybe Public Works or other groups might be able to help us abate those smaller ones, but when we get onto that scale of we don't have the resources to do it and we need to contract that out, then we would be able to use this fund to pay for those and then put the lien on the property. And then, once the liens are either paid to make the debt whole, or any of those other individuals paid their penalties, right, or fines before the liens went on their property, we would hope that that money would come back reoccurring to that code enforcement account to help keep it supplanted and sufficient throughout the years to come, and it pay for itself.
I understand. I think it would be interesting, though, if we have, you know, a yearly report on how that, the expenditures and the revenues and how it's, if it's covering itself, if we need to support it further, but basically a paper trail to see how that's working.
I think we will definitely have a revenue expense accounting because we will need that to, to bill or lien the owners, and we can provide that data.
I have some clarification just real quick on that, and just, and it might help is, in the clarification within the code that we provided, originally, the notice in the clarification within the code that we provided, originally, the notices went out and they were, they were a hundred dollar fine for the first one and two hundred dollar fine for the second one. And there, excuse me, and there was miss, some miscommunication within the code. The code states it's a hundred dollars a day for the violation for the first fifteen days, and if you don't, if you don't take care of it by day sixteen, your penalty's fifteen hundred dollars to the city that you owe. If they do take care of it prior to the fifteen days, then those fees are waived. So with the clarification of the ordinance, our goal is not to have to go get abatement warrants and go mitigate people's properties for them. That's only gonna be for the ones that are gonna continue to be non-compliant. Hopefully, based on the clarification of the code, the property owner's gonna see this notice coming, and they're gonna be responsible property owners and see what those penalties could accrue for them, and know the process, and hurry up and mitigate the, the property penalty, or the violations themselves within that fifteen-day period, and clean them up faster than what we're getting now.
Yes.
Current violation.
Mike?
Yes.
Current violation revenues that come in, just go to the general fund at this point?
That is correct. Everything's been running through the general fund. This other fund was, after some research yesterday on a different item on the audit, that's how the discovery was made, that we actually have this other fund, what's, what its intent was, what its intent is for. So we're going to be establishing how we're gonna be using this fund and reporting back to you.
Okay, thank you.
And currently, I mean, we, we've well exceeded over a hundred percent of our revenue goal that was budgeted for this fiscal year in code enforcement already, and then some. I don't have the exact numbers, but I know that we reached more than a hundred percent above our current revenue totals that we projected this year.
And if, if I might interject, we've discussed blight quite often in chambers, as well as outside chambers individually, and there was an obvious need to ramp up our enforcement. The chief and his staff, along with community development, have really done a good job of identifying and notifying residents and business owners with blight issues. They, they kind of reached a point where, without this clarification and, and getting an appeals officer, where, where they're just spinning their wheels. So about three hundred notices were given, a hundred and fifty roughly corrected the problem pretty quickly. Now we're dealing with the additional a hundred and fifty, and we need to inspire them to take care of their problem a little more. So first thing was interpreting the ordinance. We were charging them a hundred dollars per violation period, but the code actually reads that we can charge them a hundred dollars a day, and that's a much stiffer penalty. So we hope to, to inspire them to fix their problem. Beyond that, if they don't, then we would go through the process of a hearing officer and abatement. Small items, we may do with city forces, or we may contract them out, like weed abatement, we might do it either way. The key will be to document those expenses and then bill them appropriately. Now, we may recover that money once we bill them, or we may not recover that money until the tax lien become, has some teeth in it, which is when they sell the property. So the whole idea, though, is really to get them to correct their problems sooner.
Those three hundred cases that he identified, that's only within the last eleven months since we've had the program up and going with our new code enforcement C S O. So that's one person that's out there hammering it, and, you know, she's doing a great, great work. So getting that many cases resolved, she's really a good community partner, working with a lot of people.
Ms. Hudson?
Thank you. First of all, Chief, totally not opposed to this, but looking for a little more clarification. I am very familiar with weed abatement and all that kind of stuff, because I did it for several years. Couple points I want to ask you real quick. You, you've discovered money that was there, but now you're asking us to augment. Is there a need for a ten thousand dollar kickstart, or is there not?
Yeah, we, yeah, we believe so. So under, well, under the code enforcement side, just for clarification, so that we don't handle the weed abatement, that we pass that off to fire.
Fire, right.
But in reference to kickstarting this, it was found out today, this morning, about that thirty-eight thousand, but we have two significant, we discussed that this morning, and there's two significant abatements that are coming up, that are going to be, if it's successful, that there'll be both demolitions, which could be costly to us, even if we did some of our own forces. So what we decided to do was still pursue adding this ten thousand in this evening, or requesting for the ten thousand to be added to this. And if for some reason that wasn't used on these two abatements, or we did a review at the mid-year budget and that funding wasn't needed, that we could always make a transfer back out of it if needed, if there was plenty of other funding in there, or funding mechanism. And if not, then we could obviously ask to continue with that program in such manner.
I got it, thank you, Chief. Clarification, I, I know that the fire does weed abatement, you have C S O does, does your own type of abatement. Is this fund gonna be able to pay for either abating, if you contract out?
Yes.
I mean, so it is gonna also pay for potential car removal and things of that stuff?
So, so, yeah, so basically, what we've established, our code enforcement team, our code enforcement team is our building inspector, our code enforcement C S O, our vehicle abatement parking C S O, and then the fire inspector, Andrew Hall. So we're all one code enforcement team. So those actions for any abatement that we would do would be able to go forth and be able to help mitigate that. So if Andrew had a need to mitigate something as far as it went, were for weed abatement within the city, then we would bring that forth to be able to abate that, along with any other blighted properties.
Okay, uh, thank you. So you're saying we have a couple of big projects coming up that might deplete what you found and the ten thousand dollars that you're asking put in? You're saying that potentially, the only way we're gonna be able to make that budget whole again is through fines, or are you looking for a yearly addition into it?
No, so what, we needed to kickstart it, like we explained earlier. This is to kickstart it, and we have those two projects coming up. But the goal would ultimately be, is if there's the fine amounts for the non-compliant property owners, so if they're paying, if they pay their penalties, that funding would go into that vehicle or into that abatement account.
Okay.
Or they satisfied a lien that was on their property, because there's other liens that are out there.
Then it's washed.
Prior to this tenure of it, that if they paid those liens, that they would go into there. So that way it would continue to help self-fund that abatement program, like the vehicle abatement program. The vehicle abatement program right now, when we abate vehicles quarterly, right? So then we're baiting like a hundred and fifty to, to two hundred cars quarterly. We submit that to the county, the county reimburses us on a quarterly basis, and that, not a hundred percent, but about seventy percent, and that money goes right back into the vehicle abatement fund, because it's required to, to help fund that program for us to continue to get those vehicles off the street. So we kind of want to mirror that program with this, so we don't have to keep coming back to council and say, can you put more money towards this, more money towards this? We're trying to make it self-sufficient and think outside the box.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification, Chief.
To the chair.
Sir?
Quick question on these accounts. Account ending in five-two-oh-two, property maintenance and beautification. And I, sorry, I don't have the imprint of the budget in my mind, but is that under, currently under the police budgets, or is that under the parks and rec?
I think it's parks.
It's currently under parks right now.
Yeah.
And we've had the discussion with all the directors of moving these funds.
So is that the account in, in the last budget meeting that, that I asked for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to go into for park?
Uh, no, that is in, that is in a different count. That's actually in fifty-two-hundred in parks, and the twenty-five was included. So it's a separate account.
Okay, and the third question, if we're pulling ten thousand out of that, out of Vincennes' budget, do, are you gonna ask for any reimbursement? Because we're not, we're not just underneath the police officer's umbrella here, right? Now we're taking from one department and giving it to another department. So, are you good?
I'm fine with that. I, I don't think it's actually taking from the parks and giving it to the, the police. I think there's probably enough funding around that, in the reserves and whatnot, that we can support both departments.
This, this account specifically for that beautification was earmarked, the funding was earmarked for the mastication projects down in Hollywood Trailer Park and all that. And it wasn't all utilized last year. And so as the executive staff, during our executive meetings, we had discussed the ten thousand dollars and where it could come from, and we all discussed it as a team to be able to see if we could pull ten thousand out of that, since it wasn't all utilized. And we just acquired the, the new skid steer with the mastication that the fire department is currently using now to mitigate and masticate down there. So it, there is a cost savings in that account. So we just figured that if it went more global towards the code enforcement team, then we would be able to do that.
So that account is really set, and I believe it was, was fifty thousand.
Correct.
Um, to deal with the detrimental or, deal with or prevent the detrimental effects of the unhoused. We have not spent all of that money in past years, and so we were comfortable moving ten thousand dollars into this account.
Thank you, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving a hole in some, something else.
How much is currently in that fund?
Finance, ma'am.
In the beautification account? It's just in the general fund, so it's not something that we're individually tracking, it's just a, a line item.
So we put fifty thousand dollars where? You said we put fifty thousand dollars?
There is fifty thousand dollars towards that beautification account every year? Is that correct?
Correct. It's just, it's a line item, like utilities or salaries that we would do projects under.
Under parks. And so is it forty thousand now?
It would be forty thousand, correct.
And it's not really there, it's just dedicated to that line item? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
From the general fund?
We have expended some of that, from, from that line item in the past, to do mastication or cleanup related to homeless activities.
I think this is absolute essential activity. In knocking on doors when I was campaigning, I've got so many complaints about someone in the neighborhood who was bringing down the entire neighborhood and costing people value, making Marysville less attractive to people who might want to move here. And I'm thinking about the property, a property on the one hundred block of C Street that we cleaned up on a corner, right? But then there's another property, just a couple doors to the south, there's just nothing but weeds, and it just brings down an entire neighborhood. These things need to be dealt with aggressively, I'm glad you're all over it, and having the funding behind it, so you can do quick action for mitigation, and then hammer them for the penalties if they don't, if they don't behave is absolutely essential for the well-being of Marysville. Do we have, what's will the council on this matter?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief, very much. Okay, Jennifer, you're up. The last item on the public hearing calendar is amendment to the city's current fee schedule. Okay, recommendation, pass a motion to, one, have council conduct the notice public hearing to receive comments regarding proposed changes to the city of Marysville's fee schedule, and two, adopt an appropriately numbered resolution to adopt the fee schedule with the recommended changes, and rescind all resolutions in conflict therewith. Madam Jennifer Stachinski, what do you have to say?
Hi, so good evening, council. So for our last item, we are bringing forth our fee schedule. So we regularly review our fee schedule, especially when we change ordinances or if we find that numbers need to be adjusted. The last time we did a fee schedule change was January seventeenth of this year, is when we did our, for sewer liens and late fees. So I'm just gonna go over the proposed changes with you, just a quick list of what we're proposing for this time. So one of our new ones is to add an election fee section under the administrative fees to be consistent with Yuba County as we consolidate election matters with them. And this fee is in parity with the fee schedule at Yuba County. And if you have any further questions on that, our city clerk will be able to fill you in on that one. We're also updating the fee that we charge per officer, these are part-time reserves when they go out for security services. The current amounts in there are the hourly rates that we had, I think it was two or three years ago. This is to update the actual hourly rates that we pay our reserves, so that we're recouping our funds in full. The next item is in regards to the animal control ordinance that you just passed, was to add in the correctable violations for, what's a correctable violation for animal control there? The next one is the item we just talked about with code enforcement, is to increase the appeal fee under nuisance abatement from three hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. And then we'd also, we'd like to move this section out from underneath building inspector services to police service. The other one is just to update the monthly fee for our sewer, our monthly sewer bills that go out, that will be effective July first. This is the last year of the increase per the rate study that we did in two thousand and nineteen. And so it's just the, or, the fee schedule states that it would be adopted by ordinance, and so the current ordinance that we have in place is to raise the fee schedule to, sorry, residential's fifty-three and some change every month. So it's just to make the fee schedule consistent to the current resolution on file. And then just some minor items throughout the fee schedule, like capitalization and some spacing issues, just to make it more presentable. So that is the overall summary. The only quantified fiscal impact we would have to this is the sewer fees, as they are already adopted in next year's budget. But everything else, there's not a, it would just be if that service is used on how the impact would be. So that is my brief overview of what we're requesting to change. Thank you very much.
In particular, thanks for the brief part of it. Thank you. This matter is now open for public comment?
No public speakers.
Seeing none, the matter is now closed for public comment. So strike the gavel, you're right. Council, do we have any comments or questions?
I just have one comment. Raising election fees to be in line with Yuba County, who brings in eighty thousand dollars a year on their job compared to our thirty-six-hundred, seems a little odd to me. I'd just like to make that statement.
To the chair. What's the difference, what's the current election fee amount, and then what's it going to? You knew that was coming.
So this fee in particular is for constituents who want to raise in initiative for the ballot. It is not specific to anybody running for a chair, it is not specific to any position that is elected.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
So what's the dollar amount? Is it going from a hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars, or what's the scoop?
Currently, we have no fee, and we're going from zero to two hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
Most of my damn salary. Appropriate comments, sir? Any other questions or comments? Noting none, what's will the council? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Council reports and comments requests, we're gonna combine committee reports and comments requests in the interest of time. Let's see, we'll go with Vice Mayor Budakavoli first.
I do not believe I have any committee report. I, I do want to comment on some of the things that came up tonight, because like the garbage dispensers, we had brought that up multiple times about finding ones that were lockable. Didn't we bring that before? Because we were talking about doing them downtown, where they were just pulling the tops off and dumping them.
Yes.
Would that not resolve the solution? I mean, would that not be a solution to resolve the problem?
It is, and we have a pending CalRecycle grant that requests, I, I don't remember the quantity, somewhere around twenty-five to thirty of those bear-proof type receptacles. There, there will be an additional amount of labor to empty them, but with our gracious guests here that were volunteering to help with an adopt a park program, they may be able to help with that.
Well, I, I would assume that that extra time would be less expensive than going out cleaning up messes regularly.
It could be. And so we will figure that out. We have not been awarded the grant yet, but I believe we had some at Ellis Lake and the ballpark. and the ballpark.
Good, okay. And, and I think it would be a great idea to make sure we follow up with these guys. They sound very, uh, wanting to be involved. I thought that was great weather. And I think we even talked about Ellis Lake even dividing it up into sections as adopt a park, if I remember right. So, um, I, you know, take that energy and harness it when we can.
I do, sir. Bill Hudson. Um, I have no committee reports to speak of per se. Um, I do appreciate the robustness of some of the questions we had here and I appreciate everything council's doing. I do have a question, um, in regards to something that was brought up to me the other day by a constituent that, uh, on occasion comes up here before the council and asks, um, or gives presentations and then, uh, has been repeatedly informed that staff or somebody will get back to them after, um, they give their presentation and they're, they're on the consent issues when we're not allowed to really come back and forth on them and sometimes they haven't responded to. Is there a way that we could have a checks and balances to see if that's been done or not? And so, like, per se, I don't have somebody hounding me going, somebody come back to me. So does it all go to you, Ms. Nicole Moe? Or is there already something there?
After I do the minutes, uh, my administrative assistant Maggie will actually scan every speaker's card and forward that to the random party's directors, which it pertains to. So whether they delegate it, um, whether they deal with it or not, it is being passed on to the appropriate staff.
That answers that question. Thank you very much. Moving on. There's no checks and balances. You're right there, so.
But there is a process.
Yes. Mike?
It really does not sound like there's a check and balance. It's just hopefully it gets to the right person. And I guess that person's, how busy that particular person is.
Is there, I mean, if there was a check, oh, God, I don't want to do that. I mean, I don't, for the council.
Would you like us to look at how we might be able to close that loop?
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I don't want to answer right now. If you could figure out a way to close that loop, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you for everything you guys do. Lynn Gilchrist.
All right. So, um, I'm, I have some regional homeless numbers for Councilman Belza. Um, Mr. Mayor, you can, you can stop me at any time. It's very thorough.
Proceed, proceed.
I love it. Okay. So now, these are broken up by Yuba and Sutter County. So they are not, I cannot give you numbers of the homeless and those who have been reached out to or helped in the city of Marysville. So I'm going to start with the number of people housed through the homeless coordinated entry program within the Yuba-Sutter area. And I'm only going to give you the Yuba County numbers. From January until May 31st, 5,334 people. The past three months, the numbers we didn't have was 3,073 people in Yuba County have made it through, um, the, the SYHC partnerships, um, in the Yuba-Sutter area.
What's that?
That's, that is everything from, uh, the, I'll, I'll give you names of housing projects. We have 14 Forward. Do you know what 14 Forward is?
I do.
Yes, good. Uh, The Better Way, Casa de Esperanza, The Life Building Center, which is on First and F Street, which is the coordinated entry, that's the first place.
That's kind of an in and out place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the old, um, yeah.
So that would be, that would be have the highest numbers probably?
That has 37. 14 Forward has 77 people that have been connected to shelter. So, so let me go over these numbers again. So you've got the 3,073 in the past three months. Households connected to shelter, um, in March and May, 14 Forward had 77, Better Way 28, Casa de Esperanza 30, Life Building Center 37, REST 15, The Depot 14, The Mission 47. Um, w- we go on to, I'm going to go to this. What are the demographics?
That doesn't add up to 3,700.
So that's, that, that's, that may be that they've found housing somewhere else outside of these programs. So they may have found a couch.
Oh.
They're no longer in the, they're not in the program. And, and so.
Okay, they've, they've.
So they may have found a couch.
They, they may have been introduced to a program but didn't follow us.
They didn't fall through.
Because they don't want to be.
There you go.
Thank you.
Um, new households with children entered into the, into the program, 34 with children in the Yuba, Yuba County. New households without children entered into the program, 124.
Sorry, sure, real quick. That's all from January 1 to?
This is, these numbers I'm giving you now is March through May.
March.
So I just gave you, they, they broke down the entire year and, and then I, we, we go every three months. And so these, this chart, which, the demographics, within the three-month period, substance abuse, 40% is because, 40% of the homeless is because of substance abuse. 32% is because of physical disabilities. Chronic homelessness, that's 13%. Those are the, the people that just don't want to be in a home. Um, domestic violence, 8% stated that they have experienced domestic violence in the last six months and 13% stated they've become homeless due to domestic violence. That's a really serious matter. Um, behavioral health disorder, those are the individuals we see on a regular basis out on the street, 4%. This is a, this is a, 2% are veterans. 2% of the homeless population of the 3,000 in the past three months are veterans. This is the sobering number. This you should, um, really grasp. New to the Yuba-Sutter area region intake, 13%. 13% are new to the area in the three-month period of 3,073 people. So the top three reasons for becoming homeless is a lost job or unemployment, they're unable to pay rent mortgage, or the substance abuse issues we discussed. The homeless average monthly income and percentage with income, 46% of the homeless have an income and that averages $634 a month. Percentage of renters that are overburdened in the Yuba-Sutter area, 53.9% are overburdened renters in the Yuba-Sutter, in the Yuba area. 51 in the Sutter area, Yuba.
How is, so that means that there are people that are actually, um, overburdened?
They don't have enough money to pay rent? There is not enough apartments for them to pay rent?
Overburden means there isn't apartment and they're paying too much?
They're, they're going to be out.
More than they can afford?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
Might be a budget issue.
Uh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And so the vacancy rate, just for an example, is 8% in Yuba County. So we have 8% vacancy.
8% vacancy in rental, rentable?
8% of our stock, of our market, of our available apartments, there's 8% available.
Okay.
Any questions? I will be more than happy to send all these to you. These are on the, um, on the Yuba-Sutter homeless coordinated entry program website. These come out every month, every three months, um, and it's really very.
Incorporated area of the city itself, so that's why it's, it's all one number for Yuba County. So we've been in talks with them, um, as a board to see if we could make an adjustment. That's all the, all that reporting goes to HUD every year. And so we're looking to see if we can add to that in the next point in time count to, um, provide those geographic areas to the volunteers that are going out there to try to help educate them and, um, ask those questions as we move forward and narrow down those numbers for each, uh, specific unincorporated and unincorporated areas.
If, if I may, chief, uh, I think it would be incredibly useful to understand the, uh, where these numbers fall in Marysville, not just Yuba County. My own sense of things is that Marysville is a gathering point because of all the services provided and the burden placed on the city because of that. And, and in terms, as between Yuba and Sutter County, do you, what, do we have those data?
So we do have, we have it broken down, Yuba-Sutter County. Sutter County's numbers are much lower, so I didn't total off.
Just a minute. Sutter County was 62,000 people and much more area of developed, developed area. Well, no, Yuba County has, we got Marysville, Linda, Oliver's, that's about 50,000. But you're saying, what are the numbers, the difference?
So I, so, so terrible, I can't read, but I'll tell you the, um, for instance, let's just use the month of.
Pick a month.
March, good Lord. Um, 1,093 in Yuba County, 945 in Sutter County, for instance.
And I'd bet the, I'd bet the Yuba County's numbers are concentrated in Marysville.
Oh, let's just use this one. New households with children that entered into the program, 14 in Sutter County and 34 in Yuba County. New households without children, 72 in Sutter County entered into the program and 124 in Yuba County.
You've got the hospital here, which is a magnet. Oh, well.
That's, yes, the regional, yes.
Thank you for this update.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Um, and the, so before, um, that's about, uh, so, you know, this is, we finally have these numbers. Um, I will ask, um, Johnny Burke about clarifying and how we can determine Marysville residents versus the Yuba County residents, but it's obvious that this is a magnet and there are more services here. There are, there is housing in, in Linda, but the date, the point of entry is here and, and so that is probably one of the reasons we have these numbers. It's the Life Building. I don't know if the sheriff's department brings people to the Life Center first, do they? Do you know?
If there's bed space available, yes, but there's hardly any bed space available. So when you're looking at the numbers and, and us as a board trying to discern those numbers, when you're talking about the individuals that you see in the city of Marysville, yes, we do see them. However, there is the coordinated entry, there is the hospital, um, but those are the services that are here for them at that point in time. But when you're looking at those holistic numbers for Yuba County, it's where they're residing, where they lay their head. So the, a multitude of those numbers, from my understanding, and I'll, I can confirm that with Johnny Burke, is in the unincorporated area. They're not residing within the city. Now, they can get, come and get services because it's a day center at the Life Building Center, but they're seeing those people, they're, they're checking them in and then they go to, uh, you know, the new, um, uh, development from Salvation Army that's out on Riverside Drive, right? And they get placed there or they'll get placed at Better Ways in Yuba City if they came across the bridge to get services, they can, then they get redirected. So there is other services that are out there outside of the city of Marysville that you named? Casa, REST, all those are outside of the cities, the city limits. So, but when they go to either Better Ways or the Life Building Center, they get assessed for what their needs are and then they get disseminated to those programs on that side of it. So just, they could reside out in Oliver's but come and get services at the day center at the Life Building Center. They get counted as a number in a statistic there that they were helped, but then they're still residing out in Oliver's, not within our jurisdiction. So they're not technically a population count for the incorporated city of Marysville. It's a Yuba County number as a whole.
Yes, thank you. All right. And that, that concludes my council comments.
Councilman Dawson.
And requests.
Committee reports, comments, whatever you want to say.
Uh, no, no committee reports, uh, just a couple of comments. I was glad to see, uh, these folks come in and talk about Ellis Lake, that's music to my ears. Adopt a park program getting utilized even more. And that's really, I got to say, you know, you've got Say Love and you've got some of the church organizations that want to help out, but I love that this is just grassroots residents that say, hey, I want to help our community. That's really the goal, at least for me, that was a big goal, to just get residents inspired to want to get involved and, and help out. Dan and I were at the Greater Sacramento Economic thing and one of the comments that they said, I can't remember if I showed this last meeting, they said, uh, we're a bunch of business guys there and they said, hey, we're the cavalry. There is no cavalry coming that's going to save us. And I feel like that is what it is in Marysville. We're the cavalry. We are right here in this room, but the residents are the cavalry. We can't wait and rely on somebody else to come in and do it for us. And that's evidence of that. That's the cavalry stepping up and coming into the battlefield and, and really doing, making an impact and I can't applaud them enough for that. So it's exciting stuff. Um, there was something else I was going to say that I forgot and then, uh, in regards to the homeless, you know, um, and, and I don't want to say homeless because I know this is a lot of different categories, a lot of different stuff. It's important and I'm intrigued by these numbers because we've been at this for, since before we were on the council. There's lots of programs that are out there, millions of dollars going into this. We've set some things up and set the stage for law enforcement to be able to move and I think it's important and I don't want to, I'll see scowls on faces here probably in a minute before, after I say this, but it's time, I think we've got to, uh, somewhere within the next year or so, evaluate, are these working? Are they not working? Are the percentages going up, down? What's the results? We have the data. Thank, thank you for the homeless consortium to be able to analyze some of this stuff and say, hey, you know, maybe there's a need to revamp some of this, relook at it and bring other stakeholders like the counties and our counterpart across the, the river to the table and say, we're dealing with the majority of this issue and, um, you know, reanalyze that, you know? So those numbers and analyzing it, crunching it right down into Marysville are very valuable on that. So anyways, thank you for bringing those statistics. I appreciate it. And, um, thank you for everybody, staff-wise. Everybody's doing a good job. Keep it up. Thanks. Even you, Brent, our legal counsel. Never forget you. You're doing a great job on that.
Nothing for this meeting, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a brief report?
Really quickly. Um, Yuba County, uh, county fairs this weekend, uh, 4th of July extravaganza and fireworks display at Beckworth Riverfront Park. What's the date and time, Dan? Well, the date is the 4th, uh, the time?
It'll be on Independence Day.
The, the time?
4th of July, it will start in the afternoon, four or five-ish, and the fireworks start at about nine, nine-thirty.
What a good start.
Peach Festival right behind that, 14th and 15th. And then only other thing I wanted to mention was the Yuba.
City manager.
Grand jury report is out. If you haven't seen it, we have copies of it. Uh, we had a couple of items on.
Yuba County.
Little, uh, asset management, uh, that we need to address, but the rest is positive. And that's all I.
Before mentioning the next meeting, I'm always happy to see Chief Egstrom here, Chief Sax, gentlemen.
The fireworks start at about nine, nine-thirty.
Next meeting, uh, since Independence Day.
Peach Festival right behind that, 14th and 15th.
Whatever it is. The next regular.
Grand jury report is out. If you haven't seen it, we have copies of it. It will be on July 18th, 2023 at 6:00 PM.
This means a jury. Oh, hold it. Did you have a bet?
Yubasutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents.